Well, I think you have a lot of information. You've interviewed six candidates and then you interviewed three finalists. And you're a bit out of a loger jam, I believe. And so when we started the whole process, we talked about giving this a really good shot of finding a permanent superintendent, knowing that a fallback could be going to an interim. So I think your discussions tonight would be, are you still considering one of the finalists that is remaining? Mr. Getz has accepted a job in Williston area, so he's no longer a candidate here. So it would be a matter of, you know, having your good discussions that you started on Thursday. I think what you're looking for is preference tonight. This is a work session. So if you are going to take some action, we would have to have a special meeting, set up a special meeting agenda to finalize your action. But you work, you talk, you figure out what your preferences are. Hiring an interim is a little bit different than hiring a permanent position. You can find a candidate that you like and you can meet with that person and can negotiate. And the title would be interim for that period of time. So there's a little bit difference. So right now, we need to, I think everyone wants to know what direction the school board is going. And you probably do as well. So I guess I would, you know, start the discussion. If you want to look down the lines of interim versus permanent, are you considering what, you know, just opening up for discussions? I guess would be the thing I recommend, John.
I'm open for a discussion.
What's a typical timeframe on interim, one year?
Typical timeframe for interim?
You know, it depends on how well it's working. And so I've seen interims longer, you know, and I've even seen just drop the name interim and continue on even, you know. So I would say typical, the intent would be is to have a one year so you can regroup and go out in the interview process when the most candidates are available. You know, typically, a lot of school districts use December, January to post a position. They interview in February and want to be wrapped up by early March. So then you have the largest pool of candidates that are looking for that school year.
I guess maybe start with the question, are we looking at, is anybody considering a permanent right now?
According to the survey, no. That's the way I'll read the survey.
I got a question on permanent versus interim. What distinguishes them other than the negotiation and kind of the process of hiring now?
No, they are serving as your superintendent. You know, just absolutely, it does, is once you get the person hired, they're your superintendent, you know. An interim actually can be, you know, sometimes if people look at that too much, that couldn't be a handicap. Well, you're just a short timer here. You know, we don't have to follow that, what you say, because you're going to be gone soon. So really, I would read, once you hire, if you did hire an interim, I would call him the superintendent. And you expect that person to do the superintendent job for what he's hired for.
No, I understand that the responsibility is the same. But what, why do we, why do we even speak in terms of interim versus permanent? You know, when I think about permanent superintendent, that permanent superintendent could be signed to a two-year contract, could be a one-year contract?
Right. If you're going to look at a permanent or a permanent superintendent, you have a process that you've opened, you've accepted applications, you've closed it. And those are your permanent superintendent candidates. If you're looking at an interim, it's a different game. You are now opening it up to other people that would be serving an interim role for you. So yeah, so if you were going to have negotiations with one of the, well, there was 23 applicants, 22, I guess. If you were going to go with any of those, they would be in that permanent superintendent role. You could talk to them. But you wouldn't be able to consider anybody else. That would be my, I'm not an attorney, I'll give you that. So but that would be my thought is you would, interim would allow you to seek out other people to consider for the position.
Would a contract with an interim superintendent, is it, is it a, is there a specific timeframe contemplated in the interim contract? Or is it usually contingent upon the school district's discretion with regard to proceeding with opening it up for a permanent position?
Typically, it's the school year. Because if you're hiring a superintendent, say you're hiring in February, more than likely, they aren't available in February. They won't be available until July 1. So you would, the typical is the fiscal year, July 1 to June 30, I would say. And if the candidate, say you hired a candidate in February, but they were available June 1, you would have to talk to your interim candidate about shortening up their contract.
Is there an advantage to the school board in terms of its discretion with regard to hiring an interim versus a permanent superintendent on a one-year contract?
Oh, I think most superintendents, if you were hiring a superintendent, a standard contract is three years in the superintendent world. And that's what, you know, is when I was a superintendent, I was looking for that three-year commitment. So there's a commitment from the board, you know, in the district for the superintendent, because superintendents no longer have tenure. It's been quite, there's no continuing contract for a superintendent. I think if you can, if you can get a superintendent to sign a one-year contract, I think that's appropriate, or a two-year or a three-year. You can't go longer than a three-year. So yeah, I don't know if there's an advantage or not. It's just, there really is. The superintendent walking into the door has got to, definitely knows that they're under the gun. They got to prove themselves in that one year. So the board would offer him a new contract. So actually, so for example, if I was in a three-year contract and I just completed my second year on June 30, 2020, starting July 1, I could start negotiating for the next three-year contract. So when you're at a one-year, you're almost at a point where, well, they're in their last year of their contract, you can renegotiate right up front. So it's a, it's a, yeah, okay. I'll leave it at that and let you ask more questions.
My last question, Jerry or anybody else on the board, or Brian or Derek, are any of you aware of any other superintendents, retired or otherwise, that are interested in an interim position that we have not seen through the applicant pool?
My understanding that there's, we, different applicants for the interim position.
Yeah, we would advertise for interim and get different candidates.
Right. You know, for example, I'm not sure if you're aware of the Henning situation. They offered a position and the superintendent was not able to go out, get out of his contract. So they are going through an interim position. And it's basically, who do you know, your contacts? MSBA, Minnesota School Board Association, and MASA, School Administrators, they have a list of retirees that we can reach out to and they could contact us. Or and it's sort of a, you have your contacts and then you find people. You typically, it's, you bring someone in, you talk to them, you like them, you start negotiating a contract. You might have one or two people that you talk through. You know, you're looking for people who are established and have a good track record and can bring you through the year. And yeah. We, I believe there's people out there that want to do interim work. That would answer offhand, you know, a friend of, you know, some of that I've worked with in the past, I know was working with the Henning board, so.
So does anybody know of anybody? No.
So does the interim have to be a full-time position?
Most time, if you're hiring a retired superintendent that wants to come back as an interim, they probably want part-time.
Mike, kind of going back to what you originally said, based on the survey, you got the assumption interim was the route?
Well.
But then the second question was to reconsider. That was five to one.
Five to one, but then that doesn't add up. Because then when you look at Mr. Doudell, he got one strongly agree, one agree, three disagree, one strongly disagree. You look at Mr. Feroe, you got two agree, two disagree, two strongly disagree. That adds up to four. Those numbers don't jive to me.
Well, it's like a pain one to 10. Is it a six or seven?
I guess, I don't, I don't know.
It's hard to.
It's new math.
It's harder to distinguish the numbers. It's harder to distinguish strongly disagree from disagree.
But those fall in the same category. So if you go to the second question, would you reconsider one of the current candidates? Five agree, one disagrees. But then we only have two and two for the two remaining candidates.
That's, the question says interim, right?
The very first one.
But the first one says permanent.
The very first question is interim.
Yep, the second question is current finalists. And then there's five that agree. But then for the next two candidates, there's only two that agree for each one.
I just want to clarify about the survey, so people are listening. So what was done is a survey was sent out to individual board members anonymously. And the results were given to you shortly prior to this meeting. And so now this is the first time that you're getting together and discussing that. So that's just a point of information for the people listening in. And I'll just keep going here. But there was some conflicting data, Mike, I agree that.
It just didn't add up to me.
And that's what you talk about. That's what this whole thing is. This was a conversation starter to see where people were at. And now you can change your mind, you can change, you know, you just need to sort out, what do you, what do you want to do? That's what it comes down to.
One thing we've been told in MSBA, that the one decision you have to be together 100% on is who you hire as a superintendent. Because it's not fair to anybody to put somebody in a position when you don't have full support. And so I don't know if we have full support.
Clearly, we don't.
You know, and that's a concern to me because that's not, I don't know if that's what anybody would want to enter into personally.
And you're talking about full support on one specific candidate?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So that concerns me.
And you were talking about full support for a permanent superintendent, correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
How about we proceed with expanding the pool for an interim? And posting and proceeding, however that process takes us. I don't know what the protocol is for posting for an interim.
Man, that was scary.
Hey, I'm having a difficult time to hear Greg specifically and so.
I'll repeat what I mumbled. I said, thinking out loud, how, what, what protocol do we follow if we decide, or if we discuss moving forward on an interim basis to proceed with the posting and other protocols that are either required or recommended by you to get a pool of individuals specifically seeking interim positions?
Right, I think if the board is thinking that's the preference, basically you'd be directing me as your superintendent to make contacts and to find candidates that would be interested. And then we would, we would look, you know, at their materials. It's not really a posting, just so you know. It's more of a getting resumes, getting people who are interested. And then once we receive those people, then we would, you know, I actually have to do some follow-up on exactly the process. But I believe a committee or a board could get together and negotiate, meet the person and actually negotiate the contract and everything. So it's, I need some work, to be honest, on my homework. But I know it's not an opening. It's more of, like, for example, if you said that you're directing me to find, go seek candidates that would be interested in an interim, MASA, which is the School Administrators Group, again, they could send out an email to all retired superintendents and they would contact me, you know, and have me as the contact or Rudy as a contact. So then we could start going through. So I guess, in essence, I think I would stay your interim until we found the person to hand it over, if you will, you know. So that's kind of what I would see.
So would these candidates, would they be vetted by us? Would we do background checks? Would it be the same, a similar process?
Right, you're probably, you're not bringing in six interims. You know, you're kind of narrowing it down to, let's, let's take this one person. And if you like that person, let's negotiate. And then if you don't, let's move to the next candidate. So we try to, we try to do that vetting, if you will, early on, you know, by contacts, if you will. And so again, I have contacts at MSBA, I have contacts at MASA. The one that I think I had shared is no longer available. And so, yeah.
Brian and Derek, I have a question for you guys. When, you know, when thinking about our district and where you guys are moving, is there something that you would want us to be looking for in these candidates that would help move us forward in those directions? You know, when we think about the goals and we're thinking about what we're doing for students? Yeah.
I think what we want is somebody that come in that wants to be here, wants to, will fit in with our team. We have a great administrative team, looking for someone for guidance, to keep moving forward, to learn what we're doing, and then provide us ideas. That's the person that we're looking for. Just a good fit. I really believe with Rudy, Derek and myself, we have a solid team. We work well together. We're just finding, we want to find someone that's going to be a good fit for our team and help us keep moving forward in a positive way.
A follow-up to Derek and Brian. From your perspectives as principals, what role do you see the superintendent having in terms of regularly being in contact with staff K through 12, other than the admin team?
Well, you know, we want that person to be involved with staff, know the staff. They have to understand what we're trying to do in the high school building and the elementary building. So, I mean, they have a lot to learn for someone. It's going to take someone a year to learn staff and learn our programs and what we're offering, what we're trying to do to improve teaching and learning.
And Brian, I know, question for you. You know, we've kind of talked, a few of us have kind of talked to you too. And you'll have your superintendent's license coming up down the road. And I know prior to this, it was, I was asked if you were one of those that would be eligible to put in for the superintendency. So considered, I guess, a compliment by us on the board of, it looks like a vote of confidence and all this and that. And other staff members have commented the same too. But I guess, what are your thoughts if that was something the board wanted to pursue as soon as you had your superintendent's license, working on that? And then kind of backfilling with positions we may already have to fill your position? That kind of thing, I guess, what are your thoughts?
No, I appreciate that support and I appreciate the support from the staff. Where I'm at with my superintendent license right now is that I start this week with one class that's done the end of June. And then I have a practicum that I've started already that will be done by end of July, is what my instructor thought. But, and then I have to do an e-folio, so that would be August. So by September 1, my instructor thought I would be completed with my superintendent license. I would be, what I want for our district is what's best. I think we have a great team. I want somebody that who's going to come in to keep us moving forward, like I said before. If, would I consider the position absolutely? I'd be very interested in it. But you also have to know where I'm at with my superintendent license. If the board decides that there's someone else that's a great fit for admin team, I am 100% backing you on that decision. I just want to continue with our admin team being a good team and moving forward. You know, I've been part of teams that haven't been as effective. And I think this is probably a team that's been, that this past year has been very effective in our meetings and working with our staff. So I just want that to continue.
Thanks. Now, the other possible option that we would have would be, if we circle back with Mr. Doudell, possibility, or at least the conversation was started with both Mike and I, if we decided to share something with Norman County on a part-time basis. But there's nothing that's been formalized or anything like that. It was just an idea that was kind of floated. Mike, did you understand if it was more of an interim thing? Try for a year or?
I really don't know. Before it would be.
That's what was thrown out. Explain to me. And we've got the four-day week, we've got a five. So even if he was in Pelican three days a week, we'd still get three of the four days covered here. But that's just a thought, if you wanted to try him out, just throwing it out there. So. Let's think about here.
Jerry, do you have thoughts on that? Does even the logistics of that?
You know, people do it, you know, it's just, as a superintendent, you're working with two boards. That's, you know, it's challenging, but certainly it's been done all over the state. I think, when I think through that, I think Norman County East would hold the contract and you would then buy services from Norman County East for superintendent. And I believe you would have to have some sort of agreement on when you'd have to notify them, yes, we want to continue the contract next year or not. And so there'd be some legalese in there, if you will. Sorry, Greg, that's poor language there. But there would be some, you know, deadlines and everything. So you would be, it would be similar to that you have a contract with the service cooperative where each June you decide, yes, I want to be part of the health and safety, no, I don't. And you just have to give proper notification. Again, that's, there will be an attorney involved in writing the contract to make sure that it benefits both districts.
Any thoughts on that?
My concern with that was if something happened at one of the districts that he was not currently at, understanding that then our admin team, say he was in Norman County and something happened in Pelican, and then it would fall on our admin team's shoulder. That was my concern when I read that question.
So is that something where we do like an acting administrator such as we have right now?
When the superintendent's not in the building or?
I would think, yes, you would have a chain of command. So like, we did, we had an informal one, like when I was in Fergus Falls as superintendent. If I was at a conference or on vacation where, yes, you make sure that you, your high school principal or your business manager, whoever it is, they know who is making the calls for that. And certainly the superintendent would be called and have input, but physically couldn't be there. But yeah, you would make sure that you have, when anyone's gone, you want to make sure, how do you handle situations? Whether, that's good practice right now. You know, if Mr. Nelson's out of his building, they need to know, what do we do? You know, and so it should be standard practice.
Eric, you have any thoughts on sharing?
I haven't thought about it enough. I saw that question.
Mike?
When you said you had discussions, John, with, like with Rob or?
Yeah, Rob had contacted me and said that that might be an option. That was Friday afternoon. Nothing was cemented or even, he just said he works for the great board up there. They like him up there. He thought that might work, but I'm sure he's, I hope he notified his board that he was talking. Otherwise, we don't, Mike get up there. But. Do we explore who's out there for interims and then also see if that's a viable process at the same time?
If we can gather a few more names for an interim and we can still have these included? And just looking, see if we get.
Can we keep them included or if we go interim route, is that our route?
But they, I believe, would both be interim. We've been talking about them for, correct?
Jerry?
Sharing a contract would be different than an interim. You know, so you would, you would have, you would be buying services of a superintendent for a period of time. And so I would, I would look at that differently as an interim. The year determination of how many, if you signed a one-year contract, a two-year contract, would be more of how you determine interim. You would be having a part-time superintendent for your 2020, 21 school year is the way I would look at it.
Is Rudy still on?
Yes.
Oh, he's ghosty.
Wow.
With the, with the modified restrictions for COVID-19, Jerry, what's your understanding or what would you project happening in terms of the board and administration or staff being able to have actual contact, be in the same room with a candidate? Which I think, you know, certainly affected this process and it's affected a lot of districts and companies around the world. You know, interviewing through a television screen doesn't allow you to do justice in terms of. do justice in terms of being able to read body language, eye contact, all those things, which are just naturally important to us as human beings. With the, with the, with the restrictions that they're at right now, would you, would you anticipate us being able to actually meet with prospective candidates?
Yes, I, I would clarify for sure, but I, my understanding is if you keep it to ten and under and others zoom in, I, I think you'll be fine. And it, you, you really have to kind of ask the candidate, are they comfortable doing that? Uh, so I don't think, uh, I don't think you'd want to force them uh, to come until things settle down even a little bit more. Uh, but, but I think, I think, I think people will do that. I think people would like, people like to be in person, obviously, and, and you, they have a connection with you as well and you with them. Uh, so, but that's certainly, I believe, as long as you're following the ten-person rule, you will be fine, is my understanding.
Thank you.
Cal, speak up. In the beginning of all this process, when we first were informed that we had to post the opening and we were going to be posting for full-time permanent. I will say right away, I didn't want to. I wanted interim only. Going through the process, I completely understand why we went the route we did. Now being where we are, having the weekend to digest everything we went through last week, which was brutal in my opinion. I feel more comfortable with one of the options we interviewed being full-time permanent versus now going the interim route. That's just me sitting in front of a bonfire for two nights in a row, thinking, weighing all the options, hearing what they had to both say. Um, but I do agree with Ann. It's hard to not have a hundred percent board backing. And I don't know what we're gonna get a hundred percent backing on at this point.
I, I kind of have the same feeling over the weekend. Yes, I could back one of them. It was good to have the weekend.
Yeah.
I think that was the right choice.
Can I get back one for full-time if that's what the board felt? Um, I'm just a little bit nervous what's available out there for interim at the moment, but if we're looking for a bigger pool, I don't think we're gonna find it, but but if we did do a full-time, I'd like to see it a, a short contract, two-year.
Rudy with the stuff that the legislature is doing with funding. What concerns do you have? Do you have any concerns as far as doing a full-time versus a part-time? I'm just trying to think of the financial piece too, as we make this decision, what's best for the district.
Yeah, and that's definitely a, a, a very strong question. You know, at the moment, the uncertainty of what the finances are gonna look in the next two years is very strong. We just don't know. One thing we know for sure is that uh, the state's budget is projected to be in deficit at two point five billion dollars. Um, and that's most likely going to take a hit on all of the schools across the state. We were guaranteed the two percent formula increase for next year, but after that, we just don't know. The other thing that we need to consider is we've already done an administrative reduction last year. And that took a substantial toll on all of us. We shared duties. You know, Mr. Corf and Mr. Nelson talked about us being being very, very united in the, in the, in the front, but it's tiring. Uh, and we have to look out for our health as well. You know, with Mr. Ness coming on and even prior to Mr. Ness, uh, Mr. Richardson. It helped a lot, you know, just to have that guidance and that leadership that, that have that experience. Uh, with a part-time superintendent, it sounds very appealing. Um, I just don't know that it would be worth our investment. Um, you know, you guys mentioned about what if something happens when the superintendent is, is not on one of the days that is contracted? Well, you know, we take, we take that work and we take it gladly because it's for, for the betterment of our district. But that is something that, that I think, uh, that, that we're struggling with is if, if we have a part-time superintendent, will they, will they be one hundred percent committed? And you know, and Mr. Ness can attest to this, even though it's part-time, these guys jump in, jump in one hundred percent. And will it be fair to that person? I know, I know a lot of people say, yeah, I can do, I can manage the two districts. I would be very concerned for that person's health. Uh, it would be very stressful. And maybe they do have that capacity, but that is just something that I would say it's something to consider. I will buy answer your question, Ann.
So I think what you said was financially, part-time is kind of appealing, but potentially not being able to take on the extra work as an admin team. It might be a little bit too much to be able to maintain that for an entire year.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think if the short-sweet version is, is part-time superintendent is very appealing to our fund balance, absolutely. Uh, just keep into consideration the additional duties that, uh, that we would be taking on. You know, that, that would be, that would be my comment. We, we want to do the best and everything that we can at our jobs. Uh, but when you start to add more duties, you definitely start to see that quality of work that we do start to, to go down because we have so much on our plate.
That's one good way of, yeah, thanks Rudy, because we are kind of working you guys to the bone.
And not only that, but there's so many unknowns, um, looking into fall, whatever. There's just so many unknowns that I just think that added stress and pressure for you guys is not something that we want to do. I think we're gonna need somebody that's full-time and fully vested in keeping up with what's going on with the constant changes.
Brian Derrick, any comments on that?
Um, yeah, you know, piggybacking on what Rudy said, you know, we have gone down, we've all picked up more duties. You know, and I think we put in long days, but it's manageable. Uh, if we had a half-time soup, I think there would be more duties probably daily that we would have. So I think ideally, a full-time soup would be better for all of us. Just by opinion, I guess. The thing is with all this COVID thing, there was so many meetings. After Dr. Richardson's death, that we, uh, were attending to try to keep up on everything now. You know, I know the summer is gonna be really busy because we don't know what it's gonna be like. You know, they're talking about, will we be distance learning? Are we gonna be a hybrid model? Will we be back in school? What's it gonna look like? And I think the summer is gonna be a lot of planning as well. Um, and trying to stay up on top of everything is gonna be, um, a busy summer for all of us as well. So having a full-time soup, helping keep up on top of that would definitely help.
Thank you. Thanks, Rudy, too.
Thanks.
So I think that takes the share aspect out. No hearing what's-
I, I'll, I'll just add, uh, as, as I think about it, a lot of the interim soups are retired. And coming back and helping manage the district, uh, no one's been a interim probably in COVID times. You know, and all of the stuff going on and, and through the death of a superintendent. So I'm not saying there isn't a person out there, but I believe it's going to be more difficult. We're really gonna have to search to find an interim that wants to work full-time. Uh, it, it, and it might be, I, I'm not quite sure how, so, uh, Ed's, Dr. Richardson's contract, even though you were a four-day week, he was a five-day a week. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. A, and so that's a, that's a consideration. Uh, not, I'm not saying they're not out there because we haven't looked yet and we haven't gotten names. But I just know a lot of the guys, what they want to do is they want to work a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty-five days, uh, you know, and, and help a district keep moving and making sure that you're meeting all state and federal regulations and, and those types of things. But, but, um, yeah, so we, we'd have to dig and, and find, find a candidate to do that. Just, uh, just throwing that into the mix. How about that? One more thing for you guys, eh, that's.
Is Jerry Ness's name in that pool?
Uh, you know, I really enjoyed my retirement year this year and, and so, uh, you know, I, I, I've had it. I've really enjoyed working with you. I really, really have. But you know, for, for us, we, we have plans for retirement to keep retired. How's that? Glad to help you in the meantime, uh, but I, I have an end site, end game in sight and it's not through the whole next year. How's that? Thank you for thinking to me though.
I guess the question we need to ask is, is do we think we're gonna find something better in an interim than what we have in front of us now?
Just the last conversation we have been having has really changed my point of view. And I was I could easily pick a candidate that we have as a finalist. And just looking at everything that we've just been talking about brings a lot of light into things that I hadn't considered. The stress on our current admin team by hiring maybe somebody to job share, that's out. And, and interim, I mean, we've been moving forward and you know, looking down the road, do we want to go the route of hiring somebody now that's gonna come in and basically how much are they gonna move us forward in that year if they're only here for a year? I think we need to focus more now on hiring somebody full-time, permanent, two-year contract. That's what my thoughts have changed to.
You change thoughts or?
I like the interim route because of the uncertainty. I think a permanent superintendent, and I know they're not long-term contracts really, relatively speaking anyways. But it's, it's, it would be, it's difficult for all administration, all staff, all people associated with school districts right now in general. And to have somebody new to our district that's in a permanent position, go through this process, it would be hard to evaluate their performance in light of all of the uncertainty that's going.
Couldn't it be hard with interim?
No, with the permanent.
But I'm saying, wouldn't it also be hard with interim?
See, I mean, that's where I have trouble really distinguishing. To me, an interim is somebody who is interested in being there until, being there during a transition period. That's what I consider an interim. If I'm incorrect or if I'm misunderstanding that, please let me know.
No, I, I would, I would agree with that. They, they are a bridge between the current, the, the past superintendent and your next superintendent, yes.
And where we're not, we, we, we as a board still have the ability to oversee the, the interim. And ensure that he or she is doing what the district requires of him or her. But we wouldn't be so focused on the evaluation component during this such uncertain time right now compared to a permanent position where we evaluate the superintendent on an annual basis. I think it'd be very difficult to do because we don't know what next month holds for us in terms of what options a school is gonna have for learning and extracurricular activities and everything in between.
The eval process wouldn't change for an interim. You would still eval your interim superintendent with the same.
I, I would recommend it, yes.
Is it required?
I'd have to check on that. I'm not sure. The, the, the key thing when you hire an interim is really, uh, give them work that you want accomplished, you know, so, you know, do, do you want a bond pass, an operating levy pass? Do you, do you wanna get this curriculum? We, we need to do math curriculum. We need, whatever. But you would give them goals to work on and, and then you would check in regularly and that would really be your evaluation. Are they getting the work done that you're expecting them getting done? And because they aren't gonna be there next year unless they change their mind and you change your mind and you want them another year. And, and then, then for sure, I would evaluate, uh, to make sure that they're meeting your standards and, and meeting, meeting your goals.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, just with the unknowns coming up next year, and of course, we're doing the distance again, we may not effectively be able to evaluate the full-time permanent soup. So where is an interim would be just to kind of buy a little time until we get back to where things could be more evaluated more.
That's how I look at, that's how, that's the upside I see to an interim.
Mr. Corf? At the high school, I know you've been working hard at building community partnerships. In the dis, you know, to help with the district and with the, with the students and, you know, career options and things like that. What, um, I don't know, it, you know, is that something that Dr. Ed had been working on or are you working on or?
No, Dr. Ed and I were working on a, a few things. Um, one is with the, the nursing home. And working together here to offer some, um, classes here. We're also working on, um, a class for its entry to education. So we're working with MSUM and offering a college-level class for students that are interested in going into education.
Where do you think that fits into what we're doing? I mean, as far as you know, can an interim help you with that? Do you feel like?
Yep.
Lots of you on?
I think we've rolled a few things out. I mean, we've ruled out the fact that we need somebody full-time. We can't do a part-time. It's just probably not feasible. You know, I mean, we ruled out sharing a contract. You know, we just have a few options left, really.
Well, Brian, would you want to be the intern? Asking? Asking?
You know, if that's something the board would like to do and support me and again, you have to understand that it probably wouldn't be done until September 1st. But I guess I'd want everyone's support. If I, if we would look at going that route. I guess the, another part too is that if we're gonna look at that route, I'd want Jerry to be my mentor and working with me the whole, the whole school year. Like he was with Ed. He did that this past year.
Is that something that, that Jerry is interested in?
You know, if, if you went to Brian, Mr. Korf as your superintendent, interim superintendent, he, he would be full-time obviously at, at that point. And you'd, you'd have some backfilling of jobs there, some of the principal roles, whoever, you know, hired. And, you know, so you, you get some work on that one. You'd flesh that out. You know, so, so then you would need an interim soup until he's licensed. And, and you know, meeting with you, you, if, if you were requesting me and asking me today, would I do that? I think I can do that, yes. Because once, you know, a lot of my work has been doing is, you know, working on the hiring process and all the, you, you saw all the emails you got from me, right? I mean, regarding all the questions and all the candidates and, and so. So I, I think we can work together over the summer to plan the year. Once, once Brian was, again, I apologize, Mr. Korf is licensed, then you would negotiate a contract with Mr. Korf to have him interim for the school year. And, and then I would go back to a mentorship role like I did with Mr. Richard, Dr. Richardson. And, and that is a very scheduled, you know, it's, it's not time intensive. So, so the answer, I, I would, yes, I would interview Mr., I would mentor Mr. Korf if the board would like me to do that.
So what would that look like? Coaching other things? What would?
You know, I, I would try to do as little change as you possibly can. I mean, you have to, you have to get more bodies in here. So for example, Mr. Korf is moving out of the high school principal role, but he'd be superintendent. But, but he's still going to have to mentor whoever would be in the principal role. So you'd have to open up, find a principal. You know, so I, I think if, if you're gonna go down that route, I would like to meet tomorrow with, with the admin team and develop a plan, full written out plan. And then the board would have a, a special meeting. Or we'd have another meeting, a work session to review that. And, and then if that was what you, yes, you were looking at doing that, then, then you could enter in negotiations. Well, actually, you, you don't have to negotiate yet. You, you would keep me as interim superintendent. And, and once Brian has his license, then you'd negotiate. The, the intent would be to negotiate an interim superintendent at that time then. So really, yeah, we, really what we'd need to do is make a plan that you feel is acceptable. And the intent is, and, and we would have to move sooner than later because some of these positions now would, would have to be hired soon. So you would have to agree to that sort of plan. But then the actual, I guess negotiations was the right word with Mr. Korf for the interim superintendent job wouldn't take place until after he's licensed.
Is that something we think we'd wanna hear our plan would be laid out and then determine if we like this plan and then look at still the full-time option that we're kind of getting closer to for one of the candidates or, and then talk about an work session or?
I guess having all of the information, you know, is best before you make a decision.
John, I, I would ask Rudy and Derek, you know, their thoughts a little bit here, if, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yep.
From my point, I think it's a good plan. You know, we, we know what we're getting with Mr. Korf. We've worked with them. We're comfortable. You know, we get someone moved into the high school principal role. You know, he's got a great mentor in Rudy to work with finance and working with Mr. Ness, who's a very strong leader, I think would help the transition be very smooth into, you know. Mr. Korf understands what we've been through here. He's been through the process. He's been through different superintendents. He understands what works for Pelican. He understands a lot of the teachers, their needs, their makeup. And, you know, he's a Viking in and out, you know? So he's gonna be here and he'll want to be here. We're not gonna be looking for, you know, another superintendent, you know, in six months, possibly.
Yeah, I definitely agree with everything Mr. Nelson just, just said. I think Mr. Korf would be an amazing fit in that leadership role. I think he possesses all the qualities that, that we are looking for and what we're trying to hire for. I think it would be a, a, a very, very good public, public perspective when they see that a local was promoted within again. I think, I think that's what the community wants and that's what the community needs. He, he knows the town. He knows the kids. He notes the staff. You know, he works well with us. He works well with Mr. Ness. And, and I know that if given the chance and Mr. Ness takes the mentorship, I know that Mr. Korf is gonna be a top superintendent in the area. I have no doubt about that. I've been extremely impressed with his work, working in the finance office over the last year. You know, we, we, we've gone through some hard times and he's always been there to lean on. Exceptional guy. One thing that I would say is, you know, I'm just thinking about November elections. How many of the board members here are up for reelection in November?
Half of us.
And, and you don't have to answer, but how many of you are wanting to rerun?
Three.
Nobody wanted to answer.
That's putting you on the spot on the camera. I like that.
It really was.
The reason, the reason I ask that is because right now, the board and our admin team are working together very well. You know, and I'm looking for the best benefit for Mr. Korf two, three, five, 10 years down the road. I want to make sure that he has that community and that board support. That is, that is my, my thinking, you know, whether he, whether you guys offer him an interim position that, that grows into a permanent contract. I want to make sure that the board stands with them. And that's something that you guys need to discuss, discusses a board is, you know, make sure that, that he's there because we all know that if he takes superintendency, going back to a principal, it might be hard. So, so I'm just looking out for him.
I think you may have gotten some hands if Lou wasn't sitting right there.
Do you want to see a plan put together?
I'd like to see a plan.
Greg, something you want to see?
Yes.
I don't want to pressure Mr. Korf, but if he wants us to view a plan, then I will view a plan.
So really, here's, at the end of a meeting, I always like to summarize to make sure we all heard the right thing or the same thing. So the, the meeting after is, is talking the same way. So, so here's, here's what I'm hearing is in essence, you're keeping me on as interim superintendent until September 1st is a target date. Okay, so that's just, so there is a plan moving forward. The, in, in the steps, the to-do list is, we would, the administrative team and I, we would sit down and flesh out a plan that would give as clear a picture that, that would, you, that you would believe in, I guess if you will. And, and then at some point there, there would have to be, and, and again, I have to find out about this and, and find out the different things. But if there needed to be a principal hire, there, there, the board would meet and they would have to take motion, a motion to open, you know, a position. So those are some of the type details that I can't give you right now. I, I would need to, I want to do my homework. I want to make sure I'm directing you correctly. And, and so, but, but, but in essence, I think we have the formulation of an idea that, that I would continue as interim throughout the summer. When Mr. Korf is licensed, then you would look at engaging him into an interim contract, which then continues through January, say, or at January, the board is meeting and you're evaluating a six-month eval, five-month eval on Mr. Korf. And you're, and you're having talks and you're saying we want to, we want to continue. Mr. Korf wants to continue to be superintendent. You agree with that. You, you, there's a process there where you would enter into a contract for a permanent superintendent. If, if, if it's not working, you then have the opportunity to open up the position and look for a full-time superintendent for the following school year. You know, that's a, that's a lot of words with that. I, I want things on paper. That's just me kind of thinking out loud. But those are kind of the, the things that I would think would be in order. So, so first off, I, I think, you know, I think the board is taking a direction at this point, you know, they're, they're not voting on anything. I, you, you still hired me as interim soup. I'm still continuing in that role. And then the plans will be rolled out and at an appropriate time. I, I don't think we can wait till June 15th. There will have to be a special meeting, I believe, to get some of these things taken care of.
Mr. Korf, are you on board?
Say that again.
Are you on board with us viewing a plan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm bored of creating a plan and seeing what we can work out.
No pressure?
Little pressure.
So we'll probably need a work session coming up. We have one on the first, right?
You know, actually, we're going to need a special board meeting so you can take action. You know, that, the work session might turn into a special board meeting. Because right now you can't make decisions at a work session, to my knowledge. That's typically what we, we discuss things at work sessions and get directions and preferences to put on for action at the next board meeting. So, so I think we'll, we'll, that will be part of the plan. The timeline will be the key part of the plan on how we can move forward.
So we're looking, once we have a, a need for a work session or a special meeting, we just set a date or would you think we need enough time to just do it on the first and turn that into a special meeting?
I, I, give us the chance to meet and, and I think what we'll do is we need three days to post. So, so at least, you know, tomorrow morning, you, you know, you couldn't meet till probably what, Friday or, you know? But I, but again, now we, we bought ourselves a little bit of time, everybody too. So take a breath here a little bit and, and we'll develop this plan. And if you, if you like it, if you like it, you, you still have an opportunity to do an interim. You know, you still have that opportunity. You still have an opportunity to go back to your other candidates if, if you want. But, but here, here's the direction that I'm hearing and that's what you want to hear next. That's my understanding is you want to hear a plan on how it would work for me to be interim through the summer. And then Mr. Korf following through the, throughout the school year. That's, that's what I'm hearing as a preference right now.
Yeah, I think it's a new concept and I guess I wouldn't be comfortable making any decisions until we have all the information.
Alright.
Well, we're finishing up before 10 o'clock. Still ahead of schedule. Any questions or comments or anything before we end the meeting? Or do you guys have any comments or questions before we end, end the meeting or we need to talk about?
No, I think I will be on a conference call here as soon as we leave here with the, with Rudy and Brian and Derek and to schedule a time where we can meet.
Alright.
Do you want some dates for?
Possibilities?
Possibilities?
Oh, no, I'm talking about us to meet to develop a plan. What is the best time of the day for you? Is it evening the best? I, I anticipate that if we're fleshing out a plan for you, I would say at least two hours. So 6:00 or 5:00 one evening, is that?
Yep.
How about, how about next Monday? What's, I'm gonna look at my calendar.
Not Memorial Day, right?
That's Memorial Day.
It is Memorial Day. Alright. No, no, we can't meet on that. And that's fine. How about, I'm not sure. It is Wednesday, the 27th? At you name a time. Is, is, is that appropriate?
Like to stay away from Wednesdays, but.
Oh.
Tuesdays are fine.
Tuesday? Tuesday, the 26th or?
You, you name, I'm available. You name the time and the date.
Brian, Derek? Are they not involved in this? I would think they are.
Yes, they are.
Brian, Derek?
26th or 28th work either one for me.
26th or 28th works for me.
26?
26?
And I see Barb is listening. Maybe she will send that out.
We'll, we'll follow up with Barb too about the, the, basically it is the superintendent hiring process still. And, yeah, we will actually have that a special meeting and, and we'll, we'll fill out the agenda. There might be some agenda items on there for you to consider. We just don't know what they are yet. How's that? We'll. So we have the 20, May 26th at 6:00. Is that correct?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, should we adjourn? Do you have anything else, Jerry or?
No, I, I think, I think we got lots of things to do again here. So I think we're good. Thank you. Thank you for your deliberation. I, I think this is the difficult part of lots, six people coming together, deliberating, thoughtfully going through things. Thank you so much for, for having the tough conversations. I think that's, that's what will make the best plan in the end. Greg, you can stand up again. You, I'm done.
Okay, thank you.